Okay, we will call the special meeting of the mayor and council of the city of Wankin Park to session, to order at 6:00 PM. If everyone will please rise for pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Okay, if we could have our call, please.
Sergeant Councilperson Dupre, Higgins, Kelsey, Ross, Salsito, Tobin, and Mayor Tarns.
The purpose of this special meeting is for evaluation of the city manager. When the things that allow a closed meeting as if we have an evaluation and the person being evaluated requests that it be closed, that is the case. Mr. Cazan has requested that it be a closed meeting for this. So resolve that mayor council recessed a closed session to discuss city manager evaluation. Supporter. Court caller.
Councilperson Ross, yes. Higgins, Dupre, Kelsey, Salsito, Tobin, and Mayor Tarns.
Yes, so we'll be in a closed session at 6:01. We are back in session. This will resolve that the special meeting be adjourned at 6:33 PM. I'll move on then. Supporter. Okay, court caller.
Mayor Tarns?
Yes.
Councilperson Higgins?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsito?
Yes.
And Tobin?
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned. We will call the study session to order at 6:34. And if everyone would please rise for pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Okay, the purpose of this study session that we have today is for community development, block grant, and parks and recreation separation of duties. I think I will turn this over to our city manager, James Cazan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do right now, for those who are in the audience, there is a Zoom on this computer that actually has all of the department heads. I'm gonna go ahead and take my mask off while I speak. So real quick, just a housekeeping thing, you guys on Zoom, I see John, can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear? If you guys have been able to hear everything so far?
Yeah.
Okay, so good, you got that going. So, we're gonna start a little bit, so back in about 2007, Dorian, I see you over there, you can shake your head yes or no if I'm wrong. About 2007, the city combined both the Parks and Rec director position with the community planning and development director position, creating one person doing two different roles. This position has been responsible for the managing the recreation and senior programming as well as the city's community development block grant programming. So, and I'm not exactly sure, I don't remember your exact date when you started on this story, but Dorian has been doing it for a long time, very successfully. And we're sad, but Dorian has given us her intention to retire effective in February. And so this is kind of what's spurring our current situation. It is an unavoidable change in personnel, but it does, instead of looking at it as the sad thing which it is, it does present us some opportunities. So honestly, having these two positions combined is very, very unique for us. I haven't come across this in any other community. Having the position combined has created a spot where, as we say, the parks, a lot of this is funding, but the parks haven't been able to give a lot of the attention based on the structure, the funding, everything that's gone on the last 15 years. But by taking this opportunity to reevaluate, we can kind of look to maybe some improvements. If you look in the handout I gave you guys, and Don, I'll send you something that you can add post. I've got the current chart, and it's kind of a mess. This was done slightly in haste, but what this does, it doesn't show all the positions, it kind of shows the general responsibilities that fall under the director of community planning and development and parks and recreation. And under that, there's the CDVG programs, there's the home program, there's monitoring the senior rec programs, who's dealing with taking care of the recreation attendants, renting out the ruins, but also under that is managing our assistant director of parks and recreation, who's also our community center manager. Under community center manager, there's also the rink concession operations, but also a rink facility operations maintenance guy. So, a lot going on that at one point or another does follow straight up to this one person. So looking at a restructuring of this is what's being proposed. In this restructuring, we'll be looking at separating the community planning and development duties away from the parks and rec duties. Also being proposed is the eventual creation of an in-house city planner position, and we'll get to this a little bit later. So looking on the next page in the handout, we see what would be the proposed organizational chart. And under this, we have specifically the director of parks and recreation. This would oversee all of the parks issues. This would also oversee the community center manager and all of the rink concession stand operations that come under that. This also, now you see the clear separation where we actually will eventually have a city planner who, as well as doing the planning duties, zoning administration, site administrator, site plan review, would also be in charge of the overall direction of the CDVG program and provide supervision to a CDVG coordinator and the housing program. So what this will end up doing, it does, there are some items, right? This is totally new for where we are. It's very likely we'll still need some additional staff at the community center beyond the community center manager. But also, we're looking at fully creating two new positions that we haven't had. One is the city planner position, and then the other is the CDVG coordinator position. The CDVG coordinator position, the idea behind that, and I've seen it in a couple other cities, I've also seen it as kind of like a CDVG grant coordinator, but the idea there is they will handle a lot of the administrative tasks, running down contracts, working with the contractors, doing the reporting, making sure that we're staying on par with the federal regulations. The city planner would be responsible for overseeing general planning and zoning administration, site plan review, staffing and planning commission, being in the building to be able to answer questions and help businesses, developments, see what they need, be able to create a proper site plan that can get through the site plan review, and hopefully cut down some of the steps and the processes that go along with doing the development in the city. And then of course, also providing the general direction for the CDVG program. So, there are gonna be some increased costs as we go on through this, but increased costs are a necessary kind of other side to increasing service level. General fund generally is gonna see increased costs in parks and recreation because we're not gonna have a position that's split between general fund and CDVG. Also, there's probably gonna be some increased expenses as we move through the transition to an in-house planner. And even though we're looking at doing to an in-house planner, that doesn't say we're not gonna need outside any consultants. There are still gonna be projects that require site planning review beyond what we could probably do in-house. There would be larger plans that would need to be done with an outside consultant, and some of this would be organized then through the planning of the city planner. And then the CDVG coordinator position, which is another one of the new ones, this one should have no impact on the general fund. This is a position that should be able to be covered through CDVG administrative costs. Moving forward, and some of this, it's gotta happen fairly quickly. This is gonna be a short phased approach, where phase one is gonna be the creation of and filling of the CDVG coordinator position. This position's probably one of the most important to this whole thing. And then also naming the new parks and rec director position. And honestly, we have a really good internal candidate for this. And then phase two will be moving towards doing the in-house planner position. And I will mention, as we go through with doing an in-house planner, we'll see our consulting fees slowly drop away as we're doing less and less of consulting and more in-house. So, that's kind of the presentation now for everybody, and I am gonna answer questions anybody might ask. For this one, yeah, we have a report here on the back of our contract.
We have to be careful that it speaks into the microphone, or it's not gonna be picked up by the audience and by the people at home. We're still doing the acknowledgement, the council tickets you have before.
Yeah, I'm probably the only one that remembers, we put those two departments together because of the financial thing, the state of our parks and recreation department at the time, they have the only reason these two departments were put together, it was a cost saving first revenue, what we had to do. And I agree, because this is a good plan, I wanna know financially, number one, is the financial back end paying for parks and rec, I wanna make sure they're saving, and I wanna know that we have the money for that exit plan.
So again, initially, we're likely to see some increased expenses, but as we continue to do things in-house with the planner position, we're gonna spend less on the consulting. And what we're currently spending on the consultant would be a pretty substantial wage for a city planner.
Then, where we're taking over parks and rec, it's doing that, and I agree with you, we were very good with in-house candidate. I wanna know, their salary, of course, wouldn't be the same because they wouldn't have full jobs. So how would that be?
We haven't yet said what a salary rate would be. We would need to do some comparisons to make sure that we are competitive, but it would be different for sure. And I will, real quick, I did get a message that on the Zoom, it's hard to hear you guys, so if you guys could please speak directly into the microphone, I think they probably picked me up the best because I'm in the front of the line.
Can you just hear?
Just clear the room.
James, right now.
Yes. What would these, does this close your microphone or do you have it?
So okay, right now, the city plan, most of, I believe, if I'm correct, most of those fees are paid by the business that uses them, right?
For site plan review, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so that would still occur?
Yeah.
So, in having a full-time city planner, is that a planner who's helping with the DDA projects and EDC projects?
The idea would be they'd be available for the other departments when they've got some land they need, providing it's within their capabilities, their, you know, bandwidth if they want.
And asking the building to turn around.
Right.
James, a question, Dorian's retirement, I think, is within 60 days?
Yeah, sounds right.
Okay, but through the CDVG and all the programs, there are reporting guidelines that have to be done, things that have to be submitted on a timely basis, that mean plan?
Yeah, I asked Dorian to put together kind of the quick list of this is what needs to be done in the next 30, 60, 90, 120 kind of days out, so that we're reasonably prepared.
I mean, will there be somebody that is, will be doing this on a temporary basis if we're going to proceed with this change?
On a temporary basis, it'll fall upon the entire team, but until we hire somebody.
Because I only say that is because when reports aren't done in a timely fashion, then there are fines that are associated with it, and then...
Right, and there is the risk of potentially losing the entitlement. Now, this is, this will be one of the main priorities for the next six months.
Can you share it?
Yes, go ahead.
James, is it possible that we have to call another city and propose another area and maybe some guidance if we needed them?
Well, as an entitlement community, we're different than most of the communities in Wayne County. We are, whereas other communities in Wayne County go through Wayne County for their, and they handle their CDVG funds for them and distribute it, but whereas we deal directly with HUD and the state. So, other than, probably Dorian would be able to set Germer, I think is one, and there's a couple others, like Southgate, Allen Park, E-Force, all those communities are getting through Wayne County really different.
But there are some other communities in southeast Michigan that are communities that we can also reach out to for help, for guidance. I know Royal Oak is one, I know the city planner there does CDVG, might be able to help guide us in the right direction should we need it.
At some point though, I think that while we have Dorian here, that we should have somebody with her to glean as much knowledge as we possibly can. You know that she's preparing a list and things that she needs to do, but sometimes words on paper don't always convey exactly what it is that she needs to do, or that person needs to do. So I would suggest a training period with, for somebody, even as a temporary basis.
No, I think that's a good idea.
So, Mayor, you've sponsored some outside communities.
That's just going to leave instructions for your assistant hours, we cover information that then I can all that. In the meantime, if you take six months later to hire a city planner, what are we gonna do to make sure none of those calls are addressed? Have you looked at anybody for this position? Have you advertised this position? Has anything gone to move forward on this?
We haven't advertised yet, because this is, obviously, right now, just a proposal. This is, if there seems to be consensus, this is the direction we wanna go, we'll be able to, should be able to get an advertising out for the CDVG coordinator by the end of this week. We've got comparisons for various job descriptions, we should be able to put it out this week.
And what about the city planner position?
The city planner, now, I mean, the city planner, the idea there is it's the overall direction of the CDVG. That won't be doing the day-to-day CDVG stuff. Most important position in this is that coordinator. That's the person who's gonna handle the grant recording, the contracts, that sort of stuff, the administrative jobs.
Okay, James, the question that comes to me is that we wanna separate the parks and rec from the CDVG because the parks and rec wasn't getting the attention, and with the planner, who could be an extremely busy person also, I mean, isn't that going to then fall into the same thing where...
The CDVG programs are also in life here in the state, they live within the planning departments of cities.
Okay, Dorian, anyone to talk about entitlement?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know that I have been working with Lisa Edwood, and we have been working since October, and I have been training her to do a lot of the work that I have been doing, so that she has some idea of it. I have spoke with Joan Hennessy, who is our consultant for HUD, that does our annual action plans, our consolidated plans, and our paper, and she would be more, she said she'd be more than happy to help, because she has IPIS access already for our system, to help us with this transition. It's not something that, I mean, back in October, I had already got the ball rolling, because I knew I was leaving. So I have been working with people, cleaning up the stuff we have now. Hopefully, we will have most of this stuff done. The only thing that's gonna be a problem is the public hearing in February, because James had asked me if I'd come back part-time, and I said I would, but according to the MERS contract, I have to be off for 60 days before I can. So somebody would have to, and Mayor, you've sat in on so many of these CDVG public hearings, I could probably give you my cheat sheet, you could run it with your eyes closed.
All right. So, it would be hubus, I think, than to have you, Joan Hennessy, and James get together at least for a meeting, or whatever, whether it be Zoom or in person, to talk about this whole process, and how she can be an assist, and what you see are pitfalls, or maybe pitfalls, or things that go, that you have learned through years of experience, that can save us from having relearn problems. So again, I would like you to give Joan and the city manager to meet and discuss this plan, what we need to do for the CDVG.
The only thing I'm gonna stress, and I stressed it with Lisa on that too, is we have to be very careful, because we are an entitlement community that is grandfathered in. So whenever we have changes in the top echelons, they want to make sure we know what we're doing, because they can take it away from us anytime they want. Because at one point in time, they were talking about hiring an outside person to run the CDVG program, and they were point-blank told, if you did that, you're gonna lose your entitlement. You have to keep it in-house. So, that's why I'm making sure that I have Lisa well-trained, and she's already been in my files, and we're going through everything that we can possibly go through without me making her wobbly screaming.
Quickly, so what's the difference between entitlement community and the other?
The other community, the way I have seen what Wayne County is doing with theirs, they actually put the money up in the lottery. Where we're giving hundreds of thousands of dollars, you have to have plans to spend the money, and at one point in time, that scared me, they were only giving out like $30,000 to the communities unless you knew somebody who could get you more. So it really, it's a big dip in your funding, is what it is. It's a big dip in your funding. And you don't have the control that you have as mayor and council, and city management, and the department heads on how you are spending it. You have to go through Wayne County for every step of the way, every step of the way.
No, we deal with Wayne County on a lot of different things. I'm not saying that they're difficult to work with, that's far from it, it's just that this is something...
It's more time-consuming.
Yes, but this is something that is better for the city to have it as an entitlement, because we get to decide what projects we're going to be working on, and then we don't have to bet, yes.
Exactly, you get to choose.
Is how I would look at that. Okay, but that's what, I just thought that you get all the parties to get out of here, because I don't know, have you spoken with Joan Hennessy?
I think I've spoken with her, Dorian and I had some conversations.
Good to hear.
Yes, sir.
First and foremost, we're very proud of our young man, James, and Dorian, and I want to say thank you. You have done a lot for this community, you have done a lot for the local area, they didn't, people don't even understand what's going on that you have done, and you've earned a lot of money for the city, because you have been very good, and I want to say thank you on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
And third of all, I am absolutely favored with the plan and financially rebuilding, but my question, my last question would be, is will these people be department headed? Will we get more from them? Will they be performing?
So at first, at first thought, this would create one additional department, which would be that city planner. Underneath that city planner would be the CDVG coordinator, as well as the housing program. We'd also have then, instead of the community planning and development and parks and rec, we would have parks and rec director.
So would the new city planner have their, their equipment with the city council? They had to do the check charter, and they'd check, and they'd check everything first before they gave us a proper answer. Can you give us a quick answer?
Thank you.
Good to hear. James, on the city planner, how is that gonna impact John, right now he's using the city planner, but Lisa wanted to check his balance and make sure that he's done already both the files, so he knows that, that is the city planner overriding, or the overdoing, or is the city planner, I guess, I'm sorry, I'm afraid of the city planner's bad habits on those things, and like us and John.
The city planner, the, for a development to go through a site plan to be approved, it would require both the city planner and the building official to sign off on it. One wouldn't be able to override the other, because they both have different specific roles, right? The building official is looking at builder goals, whereas the city planner is looking at, is the zoning right for that? Does the site plan meet all the various zoning conditions? So essentially, a lot of the stuff that happens prior to getting the planning commission will be done by both the building and the planner.
Like it's been announced?
Exactly.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that, the building requires supervisor and the local municipal services, so far, I've been there with a pretty consistent, I don't know, kind of, we've lost that class, but thank you.
No, absolutely, and I think this is a step more towards that consistency and maintaining, continuing to strengthen our building zoning code.
Good to hear. Yes, sir. I'm glad everyone is here. Can she answer questions, Matt?
So, first off, once again, I sent my, sent a few, thank you, Bob, this is done, and I remember my first meeting as the liaison to the parks and recreation committee, I brought up the dog park, and I was shot down, obviously, because lack of funds, right? I don't know if you remember that meeting, but I do. So, doing the CDVG and also parks and rec, is that an achievement you just couldn't handle, or lack of funds, or can one person do the job? That's my question.
Well, it's been being done by one person, to be honest with you. Dennis, when he became department deputy, he more or less still was just running the community center, but he was my backup, so I could go on vacation, so that he was there to take over when I was gone, and I more or less helped out his staff when he was gone.